Good afternoon. Welcome to the Montrose City Council Work Session Saturday, March 14th, 2020. This is an emergency meeting and there's lessons for all of us to learn. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, so folks, if you can remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn this over to City Manager Bill Bell, and he will sort of lead the meeting today.
All right. So we called the meeting today based on the meeting we had last night. Blaine and I were invited to meet with the school district and the county, emergency management, sheriff's department, just a variety of groups last night to help the school district in their really tough decision to close the schools. We were there for about an hour, I think, talking through pros and cons, all the ramifications to the community. It's more than just the schoolchildren that are impacted. There's an economic impact. There's a lot of impacts to our community, facing a really hard decision. They had to make that decision. They think that's in the best interest of our community, and we support that. And so we immediately started putting in action plans. We'd already been planning for a couple of weeks, but taking those next steps. The county's doing the same. And Blaine will talk a little bit about what the county, what we know that they're going to be doing starting Monday morning. So we're working in tandem with them. So really, the protocol for, we'll go through that today. Declaring an emergency is outlined in the city code and the charter and by statute, how you do that. So we'll talk about that. We'll also talk about the different tiers in a pandemic response, and Blaine's going to go through that piece and where we fall in that tier system. And then we can talk about what council's next steps might be as an organization in Tuesday night's meeting. And then we're here to answer any questions. It would be up to the mayor to allow public comment or questions from the public, but we're here to field those questions if you want to do that.
We will take time at the end of this to honor questions. I think it's very important that everybody walk out of here with the same information and correct information.
And this meeting is being televised, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just if we want, maybe you want to throw it over to Blaine? Talk to us a little bit about the color chart that we have and just kind of the big picture, and then we'll get into the actual declaration.
So this is also just based on, you know, our meeting last night with the school district, and we at the city have also been meeting with the county, with public health, with their emergency manager electeds. And what you have before you hear this colored chart is our pandemic response. It's essentially a decision-making model for the city of Montrose and for our leadership. And I know you can read, but I am going to go through it just for the edification of the public. So it starts with a Tier One response, which really is just normal operating procedure. However, we should always be planning for these types of events. We should be exercising our plan, keeping our plan up to date and things like that. But that's where there are no instances of any type of pandemic issue in the world. Tier Two is yellow, and that basically says that there are reports of some type of pandemic issue that are starting to be publicized. For instance, as it started to occur in China. However, there are no issues in the United States, but certainly there's a growing global concern. Tier Three is orange, level orange, and that's where the pandemic has actually reached the United States and that there are specific cases reported in the state of Colorado. CDC, the WHO, state local health officials are all issuing warnings to take preventative measures, to arrest, limit the momentum of the virus as it begins to spread, and specifically directing the city of Montrose to start an emergency operations center, which will be activated and then staffed with appropriate personnel based on guidance through NIMS. And that is the level that we're at today, is Tier Three. Tier Four is, means that the pandemic has reached Montrose County and that certainly we're all working together in the community to mitigate and further prevent the spread of the virus. And so just to be clear, as I know at this very moment, there are no known cases that have been tested and came back presumptive positive in Montrose County. However, as this thing grows, I do believe that we will have cases here in Montrose County. And so if everyone has been following this on the news, following the state public health's website, you'll see this bell curve. And there's a term out there called flattening the curve. And really what that means is that as these pandemics grow and people get sick, if you are proactive ahead of time, especially if you have a certain high-risk population in your community, then if you limit, or if you limit social interaction through social distancing, if you start looking at protecting your vital resources within your operation, things like law enforcement, water, sewer, trash, all those different things, and then start taking a leadership proactive stance in your community, your community's going to take note and they're going to follow your example. And so that will then flatten that curve and actually make it hopefully better for your community as far as the spread of a virus. So even though we don't have any known cases here that have been tested, that's the kind of stance we want to take because I do think we have a very, or we have a high-risk population here in our community compared to other communities in Colorado. And talking with, for instance, the fire chief this morning, we conversed with him a little bit, and he's also fully in support of our decision today. And so that's kind of where that stands, and we do know that there's going to be a lot of other things that occur as a result of this and things that we need to prepare for, to plan for. We are working towards things like having city staff, non-essential city staff work from home and preparing for those different types of operations within the police department. We are preparing for limiting some of our response to non-emergency calls and being able to take those calls and those reports over the phone. So we will still provide great customer service, but we want to limit some of that social interaction. What have I missed, Bill?
We are going to start meeting as a staff tomorrow morning. At 10 o'clock, we'll have key personnel who are the frontline supervisors for customer service-type staff members tomorrow. And then we'll be talking about rolling out a practice regimen Monday morning. And so examples, the lobby, once we declare an emergency the afternoon of Monday, we will close off the lobby to public coming in, but we'll be sending them over to the police department lobby temporarily to pay through the glass because the only place at the city we have glass protection is over at the PD front desk. And so we'll be talking with those supervisors who have customer service personnel tomorrow, and then they'll train their staff Monday morning. So by the afternoon, we're going to, our plan is to go to the public health meeting. It's a smaller meeting with the county group, 1:30. Just kind of key personnel, I think, are going to that meeting, and then we'll roll out the actual declaration Monday afternoon. And so that gives us more time tomorrow and Monday morning to get all the press releases ready to go, everything. We'll start, it's already started to trickle out, but we'll do that big push, so we're ready to go Monday afternoon. So staffs came, come in today, talked last night, meet tomorrow, and then we'll have Monday morning.
Speaking of messaging, so we're already working on messaging for the community, you know, simple things like, hey, if you're normally used to coming in to pay your water bill, then mail it in, or use the Dropbox, or pay online, different things like that. So we'll be sending out, you know, messaging media campaign to make sure that the public knows what we're doing and that there are still several options for them so that they can get their city business conducted, but to help with what we're doing here.
Is your PD area, do we have a way to pressurize your heating and air conditioning so that you're pushing air out as people come up to those windows or not moving it the other direction?
I...
We haven't talked about that.
We haven't talked about that at all.
Something to take a look at.
We know the information we're getting from all the health experts and the recommendations is that it's spread in droplet form and within six feet. So that's why the six-foot separation rule, and it's not airborne, so it's, but we'll talk about that. We'll need Mark Armstrong to be a part of that.
Something else, too, you know, this just isn't, this wasn't initiated just with what happened last night with the school district. Our governor yesterday also issued some statements and directives discussing public gatherings of 250 people and ensuring that there's a distance of six feet or more between those individuals. So that's something that we, as far as a city, have to start addressing is public gatherings and use of our meeting spaces. The thing is municipal court and how we're going to handle that because we're doing everything we can to make sure that we limit the spread.
Will we have some flexibility on utility bills? We typically have a pretty stringent, if you don't have it in by a certain date, you can have your water turned off. Is there going to be some flexibility, given that somebody has to mail it in or somebody may have a late paycheck?
Yeah, Shani just was texting me, or our group, this morning about that, and she'll be coming in tomorrow morning, and we're going to start talking through those things. I know Black Hills Energy is already forgiving some of those things. We'll probably roll out something similar to that. We just don't know exactly what yet, but we'll know by Monday morning.
And will the city's plan detail how this affects the animal shelter, the golf course, the pavilion, the visitor center?
All of that will be rolled out in all of our documents we're preparing over the next couple of days.
And speaking about municipal court, we have a lot of people doing community service through municipal court. Is that something we need to address also?
Something that we'll talk about. We're going to have a staff meeting tomorrow as far as trying to exercise and plan for bringing not only customer service texts from the city over to the PD, but also customer service texts here from municipal court so that people can still pay their fines, their fees. Once again, we're going to encourage everyone to either use mail-in or call in by phone for some of those things where you have to have a conversation. Then yes, we'll go further.
Also, the Brown Center, or we have a lot of people staying there and being brought into town, are we going to have that in there to be looked at also?
The Brown Center is contractually under the responsibility of Lighthouse Ministries and that group.
I understand that, but I was concerned about them being brought in and...
We can, yeah, that's a good idea. We hadn't talked about that yet, but we can reach out to them and see what their plan is and see if they put a plan in place. If they need some help developing a plan, we can probably help with that.
A lot of city business can be conducted by phone. Could the press release include the best direct numbers to different departments instead of one number that you then have to listen to menus so that, like, here's the best way to get in touch with people?
Yeah, we want to, a few of us have talked, Lisa and I talked about clerk's office functions. People will be able to apply via email for permits, call directly to Lisa. Do the same for public works inquiries, directly to the people they need to talk to, and the same with court and city hall. So that'll all be outlined. We actually have a model that the city of Aspen used. It was a really good narrative, and it included all those types of things, and William has that right now, and he's tweaking that in Chelsea-Rostie as well. And you'll all get copies of all of that stuff as soon as we create it. It'll be emailed to you, so you have all that information for when the public starts calling you as well. And then department heads, we are asking that we cancel the work session for Monday. In exchange for that, we'll have a department head meeting, and we'll start talking after tomorrow. It's just the supervisors on the customer service-related tasks, but then Monday morning, 10:00 AM, we'll have a department head meeting where we talk about everything. So how do we continue doing trash service? How do we handle the water and sewer services? More on the billing side, those types of things. We want to try to keep as much business as usual going. Since we are only in Tier Three, we're not in Tier Four yet, so limit the immediate exposure with the highest-risk population of our employees. Start teleworking for employees that can work from home. We have the technology available to us. We have VPN technology for a lot of our workforce, so we'll start putting that into effect Monday morning. And then as we get into Tier Four and we see cases in Montrose, then we'll go to a little more strict policies. The county's doing the same, where you separate work crews, they're not all in the same place at the same time. We're already implementing no break room gatherings. You have to bring your lunch and eat it in your vehicle kind of thing. So all that'll be worked through over the next couple of days.
And I guess council might want to think about whether or not you want to have the exec session, evaluation of city attorney, or just have the city council meeting? I think we do need to be good role models and probably meet as little as possible, but at some point before we leave, we need to make that decision. And I don't know if that impacts you, Stephen, whether we do it now or two weeks from now.
That's your evaluation. Can it wait?
Yeah.
Well, but also, you think about, there'll only be six of us in the room, and that's a big room.
And we can spread out.
We can spread out. Is there any reason to not have it?
I just thought as far as being good role models and meeting as little as possible, but that's, if council wants to do it, that's fine.
Has Terry got any comments she'd like to make?
Wait if that is what you decided.
We can also start talking about meeting over the phone or using our teleconferencing for different meetings as well. You don't always have to meet in person. And then when we're ready, we'll go through the declaration and that type of stuff, and we'll talk about why we're doing that, what that does for the city. That'll cover some of the meeting issues, too.
So I'd like to know about the plans for city council meeting Tuesday evening. If there's a way to restrict, you know, and do it television and maybe just the five of us and...
If you want, we can jump into the declaration and what...
Oh, does it cover?
That type of stuff is what's in...
All right. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No, no, that's good. It's kind of a free-flowing dialogue, so whatever we need to talk about. So with the declaration, that sets us up for several things. It's important that the city does a declaration in order to start the clock ticking for any kind of state or federal assistance. So if we send a staff member to the county's emergency operations center, we get paid back for those hours that we provide staffing for those types of things. If we end up having to buy box ads in the newspaper to get the word out, or if we have to increase staffing depending on what we need to do over the next several weeks or months, the declaration starts all of that officially under our code and statute. And I can read through the whole thing, or we can just talk about the highlights of it. It's up to you. But a really important piece of it is the city manager declares the emergency, but within seven days, the city council has to hold a public meeting to either stop that declaration or extend it. And so what we have in front of you is the declaration that we're planning on issuing Monday afternoon, and then also an emergency ordinance for city council for Tuesday evening to extend that, basically ratify that decision and extend it indefinitely until the end of the disaster. And that way, it just, it gives us the authority to operate under that declaration. And so that's one big piece of it, is the federal and state assistance setting us up for that because they're very strict on that rolling calendar. So if you don't do that declaration, you're out of luck. The other thing is it gives Blaine and I the ability, and really all department heads the ability, to change operations at the city based on the needs of the community under the circumstance. And that's the same for the counties and any other organizations. So if we need, if we normally have an operation where our city hall is open on certain days in the code, we can change those hours. We don't need to change the code to do that. If we need to limit public coming to our meetings, but we still televise and we have call-in questions for public comment or call-in public comments, we can go full electronic. And that way, it minimizes the amount of people that are in the room, but they're still getting the public information, which is what a lot of other cities are starting to do. That's all allowed under there because it's a change in our normal operations. So that declaration gives all of us that ability to operate on the fly, make changes as needed, and work through the pandemic as it moves along in our community based on the needs. And Blaine will be going 8:00 AM Monday morning with a couple of other staff members to the county's emergency operations center meeting. They'll kick off their county EOC, and they'll be in close contact with the fire department, the county, and all of the other emergency management groups as we move along, and we'll keep all of you up to date as well and the public throughout the entire process. We'll close the doors to the visitor's center for all tourism-related items, and that frees up the staff members there to really help us on the PIO side of things to make sure we're disseminating a lot of information. We still don't want to be the ones to be the lead on the information related to how many test kits we have in the community, how many cases do we have in the community. That's not our role. It's county public health's role. So we'll still be referring people to that entity for those types of things, but we'll be definitely proactively communicating on, here's what city operations are going to look like, here's the impact to our citizens and our customers and those types of things. So by closing the doors of OBT, that allows staff time to work on those things. We also have a few staff members who are on light duty, and they're going to help us with the emergency management side of it with documentation for any kind of federal or state assistance and just make sure everything is to the T because it's really important on the paperwork side of things. So that's the, that's kind of the big picture plan on how that affects meetings. We don't want to cancel all of our regular meetings because we don't know how long this is going to last, and we still have city business to take care of. There's timely projects and contracts and all those types of things. And so work sessions are a little easier because it's just discussion, especially this first one, but then we'll probably move forward and try to hold the work sessions and regular meetings so we can keep the city rolling.
Good idea.
Please, please explain, though, why are we not just signing these today? Why are we not declaring today? Why are we waiting until this Monday and Tuesday thing?
Thank you.
So Blaine and I have talked a lot about it, and we want to make sure that all of our ducks are in a row for providing service to our community. And if we declare it today, we haven't, we have the staff meetings today and tomorrow and Monday morning. We don't have all of the answers to every question that might come up on, when are you closing this office? When are you closing this office? What does it mean for our trash delivery? We're still working through those things. And we want to hear what the public health has to say Monday at 1:30 because they're going to give us that final update on case statistics. And then we know, do we need to stay at Tier Three when we declare this, or do we need to change it quickly to a Tier Four and issue a Tier Four at 2:30, 3:00 on Monday?
We also have...
Still moving forward in that vein, but...
And we also have line-level staff, that their job is going to change, the place that they're working is changing. And, but once we do this, we also know we may get, maybe not inundated, but a lot of calls from the public, you know, possibly press calls, all those different types of things. So we need to be ready to handle all of those things and not right in the middle of trying to get staff working in a completely different environment and try to handle all of that at once. So we want to be measured, but we also want to be proactive, and that's what we came up with.
We have a very well-trained professional staff, and personally, I'm going to listen to you guys. You are the experts, you have the training. Council gets to vote on these, but we're laypeople.
And we're moving as quickly as we can. Otherwise, we wouldn't be bringing in people tomorrow on a Sunday at 10:00 AM to start getting all of these processes set up so that we're ready to go Monday.
And we really came in at nine this morning already, just working on, working on the system.
I assume this ordinance can be passed with one vote instead of a second read. Is that a part of an emergency ordinance?
Yeah. Stephen, do you want to cover emergency ordinances?
So Chapter 1-22 is the response to emergency and civil emergencies or local disasters. If you look at 1-22-6 is the term of the declaration.
Do we have what you're looking at?
Yeah.
He's looking at the entire code.
I'm looking at the entire code. At the 1-22-6 talks about the term of the declaration. And then for, in council actions, where it talks about emergency ordinances, because emergency ordinance just isn't an emergency health or public safety, but it has to be a unanimous vote since it's an emergency ordinance. So that is why it is labeled as such, and that's why all of your signature blocks are there to indicate that it would be a unanimous. If one council member does not vote in favor of it, then it would have to go to the normal, you know, two, two-reading, you know, cycle like any other ordinance would.
And like any other ordinance, we would be taking public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's important, that we're not passing anything today right now. Now we have public no.
Yeah, and the clerk would post this, and then you'll have that full discussion Mon, or Tuesday evening.
Okay. You know, I don't know if it was talked about before I got here, is, is there going to be a way to call in public comment?
So Lisa and I talked about it a little bit. It's possible, but it's cumbersome, right?
So the problem is that with the system, and maybe Greg can help with this, too, this, right now, anyone who called in could immediately start talking. So there's not a way to wait and then bring them in. So that, I think, would be the problem. I'm not sure we have another...
We could have them call a cell phone, though, and we could put that out on, I could bring in the conference phone, we could, with the big speakers, and they could call in that direct line and not through our system in the room.
Could we have them email comment in?
We could. I think we do have the conference phone tied into the regular system when we have people call in, but it's, as soon as they call in, they're live on our...
So it'd have to just be like my cell phone, for instance, where they could call them just on speakerphone?
I believe so, but...
Or email.
I'm not an expert on that.
That's one big thing we'll be talking about tomorrow, those types of little things.
Nuts and bolts.
Yeah, the logistics. I think it's important to keep public comment in some way, to allow people maybe even a choice of whether they, how they choose to comment. I don't want to restrict that in any way.
Yeah, we want to do that, too. I just emailed you what Stephen was looking at, which is the entire Chapter 1-22 of the code. It's all about...
So are you done going through this? Can I ask?
Yeah.
Question? The last, now therefore, it is hereby ordered, and then it says that a disaster is declared for the city beginning on this date and ending 23rd of March. So why would it?
So I can only declare an emergency for seven days.
Oh.
And then it has to go to city council through the ordinance.
This one.
Okay. Now I understand.
And that's to mitigate the power and control of the city manager to make sure we don't do it indefinitely because there's a lot of police powers that are given with the declaration of emergency.
Good.
And we're not all...
Though, just because we have the authority doesn't mean it's going to be utilized.
Right. A lot of them's more related to natural disasters and closures of streets, all that kind of stuff. But we're actually, Stephen and I talked about it, we're being overly cautious. It's only going to be in effect a day and a half before city council acts on it in a public setting.
Perfect.
So we're not even going that full seven days.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
But it's important to do it as soon as possible because of the federal ties.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, because we know the county is setting up their EOC Monday morning, so Monday, we want to make sure we start.
And so we're clear, council actually doesn't have the authority to declare a state of emergency. It's the manager has the authority to do that, and then council second-guesses him, as it were, to make sure that his decision was an appropriate decision.
When I read that part of the city charter, I never thought we'd be deciding.
Yeah.
Me either.
It is in the city charter. It's not something we invented this morning.
It's in the statute as well. The statute, charter, and city code. Even the mayor of Denver, who just declared a state of emergency, had to go before their city council within seven days. So it doesn't matter what size of community, what your role is. It's to make sure in a public setting that governing body is part of the process. But sometimes you can't wait to schedule a meeting.
So it sounds like right now isn't the time for questions like, is trash service going to be the same? You're going to work those all out in the next 48 or so hours, but that's the kind of information you'll be getting out to the public, what maybe looked different from city services, like not being able to walk into city hall and what... from city services, like not being able to walk into city hall and what may be just the same.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. I mean, we've got to figure out what's going on with the golf course.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some important decisions. No, I don't want to make light of it, but yeah, we do have to figure out and come up with a plan because we want to keep as many services going as we possibly can, though some of them may look a little bit different, or how we, more likely, how we approach them will be a little different.
Right. I mean, the animal shelter and the animals still need services, too. I mean, they-
But, so just to let you know, Carrie's, Carrie's on top of that, Mike's on top of that, we've already discussed-
We have many different facilities that are not the same. And I thought I saw somewhere that there are already some restrictions at the pavilion, I believe.
So we haven't issued any restrictions yet, but all of the events through March 22nd have canceled. So it's pretty much-
On their accord.
On their accord.
They've canceled.
Large gatherings, so it's pretty quiet out there. So we'll be talking with Kara about that, maybe go to minimal staffing, maybe use that time to just clean the whole facility, which is a good time to do that. So there's, but we technically haven't issued any, any special rules yet at the pavilion.
The senior park has.
Senior center, and then they control their own, but they've decided not to.
I think I saw that, that-
Yeah, for the senior center.
Yeah, given the population.
And they made those decisions. I think it's golden circle or-
Good.
Yeah, and Stephen mentioned the golf course. That's a legitimate concern for us because a lot of the golf members are in that vulnerable age or health category, and so-
And we can say that there was a social scheduled for pass holders, and we canceled that last night, particularly because of that issue.
Right.
So we've already started working on this. I don't think anybody waited. You guys have really been on top of it.
The county's doing a great job, too. What other questions?
Since the school district has statewide, has restricted all use of school facilities, including playing fields, that type of thing. Is there ever possible that we would be restricting city parks?
I would say there is a possibility, but it wouldn't, we will be talking about that, and we wouldn't do that unless we're in tier four.
Okay.
But not in tier three.
And it could be just a section, it could be the playground equipment, but not necessarily the walking trails.
Maybe shelters?
Yeah.
The Lions clubhouse?
We should talk about bathrooms.
Oh, we will be shutting down all public restrooms first thing Monday morning, outdoor restrooms. A lot of them are still winterized anyway, but shutting the rest of those.
We're telling people, go ahead and go outside and walk the trails, get your exercise, but don't have to use a bathroom.
Yeah.
Plan ahead.
That's pretty common right now. A lot of the cities are closing down the public restrooms because there's, it's really hard to go in and sanitize after, you can't really staff those to where you can go in and clean them every time somebody uses it, and you can't really control, and people are stealing toilet paper out of all the public restrooms, really statewide.
Wow.
I was just in a couple of businesses yesterday where people keep stealing their toilet paper, so there are all kinds of different issues, but mainly it's sanitary issues why we're closing.
Any other questions from council? And if council hears something from the audience, please chime in, but I think I'd like to see if there are some questions we can answer. Yvonne?
Always have a question. Well, I know that this isn't, this is probably more of a county issue, is the airport being considered for closure? I think that that's probably one of the biggest ways to bring in traffic that might be carrying something.
They didn't mention that yesterday at all, airport.
But you're right, that would be a county issue.
I know that at the advisory meeting this week for the airport, they have tripled their cleaning staff.
That's still a starting. David?
Do you have the email I sent you this morning?
Yes.
Can you read it on my behalf?
I can pull it up real quick.
You're going to make notes and questions coming from the airport.
Let me have your copy, David, because for some reason, my computer doesn't want to download. I downloaded once, but-
Paragraph two is black.
Right. Dave Stockton's question is, is the city working with the county and/or state officials to adopt an emergency ordinance regarding the rationing of perishable and non-perishable food items at the grocery store? If so, will such rationing extend to some hygienic products?
Answer is no. We have not had those discussions.
I'd like to clarify what tier three is. I'm unclear about the clarification in the gears.
Sure, yeah, I can, I can talk about it again. So tier three means that we're-
Maybe you should turn around.
Sorry.
Maybe not here.
I will. I'm used to them. So, yeah, basically what it means is that the pandemic, or COVID-19 in this case, has reached the United States and has also reached the state of Colorado. So of course we have many cases already in the state of Colorado. I want to say that we're, I think, fourth or fifth in line in the nation right now for the most cases. And in this particular case, we actually have cases that are in Genuson, Colorado. So in that case, we would be working with CDC, we'd be working with Colorado Department of Public Health, and our local public health organization, which is housed out of the county, and that we would be starting an emergency operations center. So no different than the county is doing on Monday morning, we also would be starting an internal city emergency operations center and staffing appropriately so that, just like any type of disaster, as the disaster grows, then we can grow that emergency operations center to handle whatever we need here. That EOC will address things like staffing, operations, sudden things that maybe come up within the community that we hadn't planned for, all those different kinds of situations so that other departments, other, or city leadership can also focus on the running of the city.
I'm extremely knowledgeable about what's going on because I tapped into Medscape, which is a medical site, and it could rapidly escalate to tier four, rapidly. And I think the question about the airport, if it's targeted by even major, with people coming in from all of the United States is a real crime.
And that's why we're starting an EOC now, because what you don't want to have happen is suddenly you're in a tier four situation, and now you're having to get an EOC together. That's why we're trying to be proactive.
And I, and I needed to clarify, what is the amount of people that were limited for a meeting or a gathering? Because that varies from state to state.
It does, you're right.
That seems insane to me.
It actually does vary from state to state. At least what the governor is suggesting is 250 people and a limit of six feet. So what the WHO is saying is that this virus is in airdrop form, and so six feet is what WHO is recommending as far as an appropriate distance for social distancing.
And I don't mean to, I don't mean to be negative, but it is on the surface, and can remain on the surface for through forty hours. So surface issues are a part of the problem. And that is, I think, because our precedent neglected to do the correct thing in an efficient manner, I think we're behind the curve. And I think we're going to be on target. We need to be-
Can we try to keep it to questions that the city of Montrose is going to answer?
I am, I'm getting to there. I'm saying that I think we need to make sure that the availability of what my husband had asked for the supplies, I think you need to look into that immediately because everybody's panicking. And there has to be a way of delegating a certain limit, and we have to be on top of it immediately because this is going fast. And the doctor, Bousy or whatever it said, he's the only one that made this happen this quickly, because he said, you've got to flatten it out, and you have to flatten it out now, not later.
So we'll be, that's part of the county's EOC. That'll start all those discussions on the details of that. And just in our groups, we talk informally about that, but that's another reason for the declaration of emergency, because it actually allows you the ability to ration and do some of those things. Without that declaration of emergency, we don't have that control, but it doesn't mean just because we have it, we're going to use it. So we'd be in partnership with the county's emergency operations plan, and it would be a joint decision at that point with city and county before we were to do something like that, but that'll definitely be in the discussions Monday morning.
I appreciate that you've given this opportunity to question. I also have an opportunity to ask you, are you the first responders? Is your department responsible for first responding? For first responders to somebody who said, I, you know, I'm-
They have, they potentially have COVID-19.
Right.
So we have a plan for that. So actually, the Montrose Fire Department would be the first responder in that case.
But you're not, you're not-
So, no.
No, okay.
I would just be planning emergency response for city functions, law enforcement, things like that. But in that particular case, we have already met with Tabron, and he has a very robust plan on how he's going to handle that. Just like any other community, we're suggesting that if you feel like you have COVID-19, then you need to call your local health practitioner, or you need to call the hospital, but do not just show up at any of those places.
And I understand that that's been very much required. I have a question for Jake, for, for, um, your doc, your husband is a doctor?
Correct.
And I needed to know, in general, is there enough protective gear? Is there enough respirators? Is there enough general supplies?
I think that it would be best be answered by the hospital or the county health department.
And I was, I'm, I would like to see Kaiser in some way, shape, or form, through this, this in a very-
Nothing to do with this discussion. Yeah, so the hospital isn't part of the city, so I think that question is best appropriate to the hospital. We have no authority over them, we have great working relationships, but the hospital is a separate authority than the city of Montrose.
Or county public health.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
May I, may I realize that, like you guys said, you're focusing more on, one, city operations and not this sort of public health specifics, and it sounds like also not the private sector and the community, but I, and you're also, I think, getting, I'm getting the sense that you guys don't, like you said, don't want to be the central conduit of information for all things COVID in Montrose. There's different local and state and national sources for that. But I can say as someone who tries to find, trying to sort through all this, right, particularly in the media environment that we have now and all the different sources, I mean, I think, me personally, I consider myself media savvy, I mean, I'm going, I hope to be able to look to some immediate local conduit of information, and certainly as you declared, you know, once the declaration comes out, I think people are increasingly want to know from a more localized source the centralized information. So on that point, I guess I'm wondering what the connection is between what you guys are doing and then what the private sector in Montrose is doing? That gets to some of these questions about what's happening in the grocery stores. What is the guidance, you know, from the citizen about how to interact with the private sector? Are the businesses going to stay open? Should we still be going out, you know, to eat? Should we have confidence that as the city changes its operations in such and such a way? Are you guys sort of interfacing with any group of private sector to see what, to gauge and to maybe convey to the citizens what, how the private sector's operations might be changing? Maybe that's a way to summarize it. Are there any meetings going forward about that? Will there be any guidance about that in the, in emergency declarations or in things forthcoming?
Yeah, we are already working on those things. So Ann and I met with Department of Local Affairs and their representative for economic resiliency at Coffee Trader this week. We met with the owner of Coffee Trader and actually got some input from the private business side of things, especially them being a gathering place and a food service venue. So we talked about that. We are really close partners with the Department of Local Affairs, and they're presenting a lot of information on how to provide businesses the support they need to weather the storm. Feds are working on some SBA models that'll help with some short-term lending and those types of things for small businesses. But that's one of the big things that we've talked about, the cityer's role on my side of things will be the economics of our community. When people don't have, they don't have kids in school, so now they have to stay home, daycares and preschools start closing, now they can't go to work. What happens when those small employers don't have any employees and they have to shut down? And maybe those, those business owners who live in paycheck to paycheck or have very thin margins, and now they have to close their business. So that's, Blaine and I are kind of separating duties a little bit. That's my focus. And we've already, with the help of Chelsea Rossi in our Business Innovation Department, we've reached out using some of the databases that the Chamber of Commerce had, and even using some businesses' customer databases to start disseminating information to our local businesses. And then Blaine's going to focus on the public safety and welfare side of things, the public health piece, all of his partner. That's kind of how we're divvying it up as a emergency management team here at the city, and we'll be talking a lot as we move forward. Once we do the declaration, that gives us a little bit more authority to hold some meetings with maybe our large businesses like City Market, Target, some of those. We can ask to meet with their managers, ask what their plans are. We haven't had those meetings quite yet. We just started all that this week, but I think that's our plan moving forward, just to, we've heard or seen anecdotally, run on things, right? City Market was pretty, their shelves were pretty bleak yesterday.
It's very helpful to know, and that, yeah, that will be ongoing, and then that will be available, dealing with basic, the public, various ways about that.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be creating a webpage, too, so point of information, everything will be pumped there, as well as just social media in general, box ads in the paper, all those types of things. And then we won't give out a bunch of information on the COVID stuff, but we'll have all the referrals right there. Where do you go for that part of the information? By our side. We just want to make sure we're working within our areas of expertise. And our areas of expertise is not epidemiology, but it is on local economy and business and that kind of stuff.
We also want to make sure the messaging is consistent. Last thing we need in a situation like this is to be saying two different things from two different governments.
That's a problem on the governmental level, and I think that happens on a local level.
I just want to segue to the, Phil hit, started on the question I had. I think it's great, and I appreciate you guys working weekends and being proactive, and it sounds like you have a very detailed, awesome plan for moving the city forward. But when I first saw the schools closed yesterday, the thing, and you get on daycare for me, was also, we have four weeks where low-income families depend on schools to feed lunch, healthy meals. Is there anything the city can do to help, you know, take care of that? Because that's a huge burden that's now gone. I mean, it's great they closed, I, I think that's a great move, but daycare, families, you know, meals, now they're home, other, you know, I know we don't have a magic wand, but it just seems somewhere we need to address that side of this whole situation, too.
So in our discussion with the school district yesterday, that's the topic I brought up, and that's where I think the city can take a proactive stance as, as proactively as we can with the knowledge that we have. Now we've got to reach out to all of our partners, but that's the number one concern from the city side, was what happens to our people when you close down the schools? Because schools aren't all about education, it's also about family stability. Families need their kids to be in school, a lot of, for different reasons, and so there's a lot of those trickle-down effects. But we, I brought up yesterday, we can reach out, and Ann and I have talked about it, and others reach out. We have the backpack program in our community that helps kids and low-to-modern income families get food on weekends in the summertime. We can maybe partner with Sharing Ministries and the nonprofits in our community to start rolling that stuff out. There's also the rules where schools can still provide breakfast and lunch, we were told yesterday by the school superintendent. My concern with that was how are they going to get there? Because they're not busing. So a lot of the kids we're talking about in this category also don't have cars or ability to drive, eat breakfast, go back home. And so we really are going to need to partner with our nonprofits, and that's why it's really important we have great relations with our nonprofits. We already had Pick Place reaching out to us and several other nonprofits this morning asking how we can work together. There are ideas generated from a variety of people on how could we get Meals on Wheels programs going with volunteers that could maybe package the food either at the school or at Sharing Ministries? that could maybe package the food either at the school or at Sharing Ministries, and then get the addresses of the kids that need it, deliver it to them. And then people said, well, do you want them going and interacting with people at their house? Maybe they're self-quarantined or something. So then we were brainstorming, well, maybe you could just drop it off on their front doorstep. You don't have to personally interact. So we've had a lot of those discussions just in the last 24 hours.
So it is something that's on the table for you guys. It's not just theoretically, or...
No, no, it's definitely...
It sounds like a great plan. I mean, it's part of what you're looking at.
Yeah, it's going to require a huge volunteer outreach. And we've already had a bunch of people emailing us from different groups wanting to volunteer.
Thanks.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I just had a very quick clarification question. Will the parks be issuing permits for immediate gatherings at all the grocery gatherings?
I haven't talked to Lisa about it, but the answer's going to be no.
David?
Any, I see red district folks here, I don't know what they're doing, and all points transit, are they going to stop service?
I can't answer them, but I have to.
Well, I know that they can answer themselves, but all points public transport, is that something that you have control over?
We do not.
With this declaration?
Oh, with the declaration, technically, yeah, we would have some authority to guide their activities, but we wouldn't just unilaterally do that. We'd meet with them, talk with them about it, and now all start Monday.
So how quickly will Pelosi's new law that she passed trickle down to you?
I don't know. I don't know details about what happens.
I'm sorry?
I don't know the details of what you're referring to. I don't know anybody else.
Pelosi's... The House of Representatives has passed a bill that is now going to the Senate. That's how it works. It goes House, and then the Senate, and until the Senate passes it, and it goes to the President, nobody knows.
My understanding is it gets passed by the President, and then how long does it trickle down?
We don't, it would depend on the verbiage in the bill. Are there any other questions that the city can answer about the city? And I thank you all very, very much for coming. Again, you know, stay tuned to local media, and there will be, I imagine, a plethora of, what are those big words, emails and press releases. We will do everything we can to keep you up to date as quickly as we can. Again, thank you very much. Have a great weekend. Go home, stay safe.
No work session later.
No work session, I don't mind that.
No work sessions.
Would you decide on executive session?